Is it turned on? Nice. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Carter, do you have your phone?
I should just flip into recents. Sorry.
That's an engine today on the way out. You're going to see whiteout.
Whenever I am right up all the way over the mountains.
Hi Kara Carter Wells. Hey, you are on speakerphone with the Union School District Board as well as our deputy clerk is here taking minutes and James Breitag, our athletic director is here.
Let me call the meeting to order. We want to get you on first. Meeting is this special meeting ORS 192.640 parentheses 3 is called to order at 7:00 on Tuesday, the 18th. Going to intro our special guest via phone Kara Parker. She is our district and board legal counsel. She's listening in to answer any questions that we have. She is not here to give us advice, but she is here to answer specific questions and she will tell us if it is out of her scope tonight. So you would like to introduce yourself further Kara? Go for it.
Jim, the district is our client. I'm not able to answer any questions from any audience members. I carry the guidance to the board as they do this for procedural reasons to make sure that we're following the name on and then to also answer any legal divotational questions if those things were to come up tonight. So I'll just be listening in and if any board member has a question for me, please chime in and let me know.
Terrific. Thank you very much for attending tonight. We very much appreciate your assistance. All right, as usual, I'm going to describe how we're going to proceed tonight. We are going to start by finishing deliberating and making a decision on whether we will support Mr. Wells' decision of no penalty for students' participation in the unsanctioned practice and game implementation or we will reverse his decision.
We'll be in the executive session.
This will be done in executive session. Okay, so I'm just doing order of business tonight so everybody knows where we're at. The second portion of the meeting, we will hold in open session to deliberate on whether we support Mr. Wells' decision of an official written warning for parent involvement in the unsanctioned practice and aftermath that also has future consequences spelled out. As we head into this tonight, food for thought, we're in the business of educating kids. It's our duty to lead by example, give grace where we can and support kids to being the best they can be despite individual circumstances. So as we proceed, food for thought. We are now going to adjourn to executive session ORS 192.660 parentheses 2 parentheses F.
You bet. Thank you. I'm just gonna open the door in case somebody's standing out there.
Oh, that's a good one.
I don't, I didn't see any lights or anything.
Yeah, but yeah.
Welcome in.
All right, we are going to call special meeting ORS 192.640 parentheses 3 back in open. I am going to ask, is there a motion to uphold Mr. Wells' decision for the students?
I shall move.
My second.
I would like to add the proviso that the administrators meet with the children and their parents and have a meaningful discussion with them.
And the motion has been made to uphold with a caveat as presented by Mark. Please vote yes if you'd like to uphold with the caveat, no if you would like to reverse and not accept Carter's decision. Okay? Mark, your vote?
I vote uphold.
Nick?
Yes.
Macy?
Yes.
And my vote would be a yes as well. So that motion passes. Do you understand the task?
Yes, I understand the charge.
All right, excellent. The next piece of our project is in open session. It is consideration of the appeal of superintendent's decision in the matter of a community members complained about girls' basketball private closed practices, parent consequences. The current consequence that Mr. Wells has dealt is a written official notice that spells out the next consequences clearly. In other words, you have been warned if you do anything, again, these consequences will take effect immediately and they are spelled out very clearly of what those would be from suspension to being not allowed into any UHS activities or OSAA sanctioned activities. I will, you can look, I will read Kara's parent, not advice, but her provisos in her summary. You can exclude them from OSAA sanctioned events. They have no right to attend OSAA sanctioned events. They would have no cause of action against you given the parents' involvement in sports coaching, volunteering in the league. However, you may not be able to enforce very well. It is no legal risk, there is no legal risk to excluding them from events. This will however further inflame the situation as you already know. Clarification for me as I listened and when I went back through my notes of what we heard last week was Mr. Wells' investigation and both parent appeals cite people as the ones who were the active participants in calling this meeting to happen or calling this practice to happen and then initiating it. And from Kobe's, I haven't heard Kobe's piece, it sounds like there's one, but the three that were named in all three of what we heard last time were Cherie Blackburn, Stephanie Shoemaker and Anita Evans. Those were the three names that came up. Lance Shoemaker was present but not participating and that was backed up in Kobe's thing. Kevin Browning?
I think you said that wrong. Lance Shoemaker was not present at any of these, at the practice.
Oh, he wasn't even at the practice?
No.
Okay.
No, the one name that was included in the statement that I just read was Kevin Browning. Kevin Browning was the one that was there and told our coach about the situation.
Okay, so.
Well, Kevin Browning's name did not come up in any of the appeals of my decision.
No. Okay, so the three bad actors in this case are, that have come up in every single investigation are Cherie, Stephanie and Anita.
But what I've done so far is any adult that was there, any adult that was there was Cherie, Jay, Kevin Browning, Stephanie Shoemaker, Anita Evans. And because of all the other situations with Lance Shoemaker, all six of those people have received that same written formal warning that the next time you participate in any kind of negativity towards Union School District, you will be banned for a calendar year. All six of them received that same letter.
With in that same official warning, there was also a caveat that there will be changes made proactively starting next year.
Correct.
Worked on over the summer and started next year to again, proactively prevent this stuff from hopefully happening again. That's where we are with what Carter has said. So once again, our task is do we uphold what Carter has given out? Do we uphold it with additional provisions? Or do we reverse it and say, we don't like it, we want this to happen? And this is the deliberation. This is where the discussion comes in.
So one thought I kind of had opening years, but we seem to have repeated conflicts with the same families. And I think that the letter was something that needed to happen, but I think having them not involved in athletics for the remainder of the school year would be a good thing. The parents.
Which parents?
So I think the only ones we can really rule on would be Stephanie, Cherie and Anita because they're the only three that were part of the complaint, correct?
Those were the three that were consistent.
Yeah, Kevin Browning's name did not come in.
No, but I mean like the actual formal complaint that was written in the piece was, was they were not happy with Carter's discipline of those three parents.
Right.
Right, but like we don't need to rule on all six though, do we?
My. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
The three that were named repetitively were Cherie, Anita and Stephanie.
Somebody clarify what you said, just this year?
Yeah, no, I mean, I guess that would be, we would talk about it and see. At a minimum, I would say through this year. So you know, that would give, I'm not gonna say just sporting events because you know, they deserve to go to graduation for their child. Like we shouldn't, I don't think we need to be paying them from, from those types of things, but I think we've had enough things happen over the last four years, but you know, this, this was one of them for sure, but we've had issues with these families repeatedly with their behavior. They've been, one thing we learned in the meeting last week was that they've been asked not to coach from the sidelines, they've been asked not to yell. They've been, though this was their first written warning, they actually had several verbal warnings. They weren't like, hey, this is your verbal warning. They were verbally asked to turn it down several times over the last several years to the point of they asked to step down from volunteer coaching positions. And so I think, I think the district just needs to kind of break ties for a little bit with sporting events. We clearly have some issues and you know, I think at a minimum that Cherie and Stephanie probably need to step back for a little while.
I agree with Macy and I would, I would not extend that as spring sports. Spring sport ban would be enough.
I agree.
And.
I think with, with the discussion with them that says, A, like it's only spring sports right now, but if we have one issue in volleyball or we have one issue in football.
Oh, sure. That's, that's still on the table.
That's on my, and it's, it's not that hard year, it's twelve months.
Yeah. The other piece that we can talk about, I would like for those adults to apologize to somebody.
Our coaches.
Coaches, yeah, right. That's, that would be number one. I would ask them to write a letter of apology to the coaches admitting that they did wrong.
I disagree with, with going with reversing Carter's on. I don't think it's appropriate to nail somebody to the wall having not, and I get that they've had all of these verbal warnings along the way, but in my mind, unless it's written down, officially presented, you're nailing somebody to the wall randomly over the last four years of poor choices. I just think the, the formal complaint that Carter put together, he had delivered it. He said, look, this is where we're at. You do this again, we're done. But in my mind, that is fair warning given, we're done playing. Now granted, these people have made a lot of bad choices over the years, but it's just like me sitting in the stands this year at basketball. I've got Cherie and Anita sitting right here in my ear coaching and hollering at the officials, but instead of me turning around and saying, knock it off, what do I do? I get up and move across the gym so I don't have to listen to it. My bad. I should have turned around and said, knock it off. Nobody wants to hear that crap. The coach is hired to do it, we hire the officials to do it. But again, it's that same kind of thing. Nothing's formal. A written formal warning is, is fair, it's equitable, there's, there's no questions about, well, Cherie was only, Cherie was warned three times, Stephanie was not allowed to volunteer again. All of these other things that in my mind are informal, whereas a written formal warning, there's nothing, there's no question about it and we have no consequences written down anywhere. This provides consequence, it's spelled out. You do this again, this is what's going to happen. Up until now, none of that's written down.
I don't think it makes any difference whether it's formal written down or not.
Okay.
They were, they were being unsportsmanship and they knew damn well they were being poor sportsmen, so whether or not they had a formal letter telling them they were just making difference.
Okay, we're gonna really disagree on that. Well, that's fine, that's why we're mortified.
One of the other topics is that they're asked to sign the parent code of conduct at the beginning of every season and you know, I think of that similar to you're asked to, to take a license, take a test of your driver's license. And when you get pulled over for breaking the law, you get a ticket or you get thrown in jail or you get off stop warning and it doesn't stay in the, in the manual or in the law of which one you're gonna do. It's not the discretion of the parent.
But the consequences are spelled out and you know, one of these things will happen.
Well, I believe those consequences are spelled out and it's put in their parent conduct code that they require assigned.
Are they?
That they could be removed then.
I don't know, we put a spokesperson on the court if they'll look at it. It says they agreed to follow circuit.
Yeah, do we specify the, I don't think we specify the, we say, yes, you're supposed to be a good sport.
Well, but the parents signed a contract too. And so what I would say is they breached that contract and they breached, you know, the mega contract holes that they agreed to. And I also think that, you know, if, or if it has set a precedent of it always has to be in writing, then that's gonna have to carry this reply. And I think that's a hard precedent to set too. That means every teacher that we talk to that we say, hey, you need to do this, it's about being writing. And every person that Carter talks to in the process of, you know, detention and, you know, before you get into this and that, it's about being writing. And I think, I think there's still something to be said about, about person's word and you know, and also we're not talking to kids, we're talking to adults that are old, grown, that I hope have conscience at some point. And Kara, I think that in all of this, it all boils back down to they're really the ones that started this division amongst this team. They're really the ones that, they are the ones that made this happen and I feel like it's, I feel like beating discipline from, can't go to the spring sports with minimal.
So as far as school goes, like as an employee at school, you get a verbal warning, verbal warning, then you go to plan assistance. What we've started doing now is if we give a verbal warning to an employee, we document that we gave them a verbal warning on this day and the next day.
So they do all this?
No.
Yeah.
And, and so then the next step is written program.
Right, so we can adjust our plans for sure. And we can go, yeah, moving forward, we obviously, if there's anything we learn from this, we need to administer our written warnings early and we need to have a policy moving forward for how we, how we treat, respect to your code of conduct and all of those things. But I don't think that our lack of written out rules means that these parents should get off stop warning.
Well, my thought is those parents who aren't good and well with being a big sportsman, they don't need a written document outlining their bad behavior.
Once again, we're gonna agree to disagree. I disagree with you. I believe everyone, no matter how egregious their mistakes are, everybody deserves a fair warning and a knowledgeable of if you do this, this will happen. And we have not set that in place.
I don't think that's fair.
Okay. I say, I'm, I'm one person, I'm fine here, but that's, I feel very strongly about that. I, I just feel.
Can we insist that they write letters of apology?
We can ask.
We can ask.
I mean, that's essentially what we can do is I can ask.
Yeah. Okay, and that's all we can do.
I mean, or you can, you know, you can say your student, if doesn't get to participate in our, I guess, I mean, I'm just volunteering in brush by trying to answer a question that I really don't know the answer to.
We can't manage students.
Yeah, in this, yeah.
Yeah, students cannot be a part of this. We've already made a decision on students.
So I think, I think what the, I guess I'm kind of defending my decision here in my comments. And the reason I feel like this decision was the best for the district at this point in time was because I agree with what Jocelyn was saying is that I don't know, and I'm gonna fall on this grenade here, is I didn't do a good enough job of getting into those bleachers and going enough is enough is enough. And then I go to the state basketball tournament and I do do that and the lady says I'm harassing her. She says, you're singling me out, you're harassing me. And so they know, they know that we're on it and we're watching and people are in point and people are looking. I don't know if that's gonna curb the behavior or it's just gonna take that one time where she stands up and yells travel and then I have to go down to the court and stop the game and say, you just yelled travel, you're not the official, you're out. And then I don't think, I think that's gonna be the bigger consequence here.
I do too.
Because that's going to be like, I mean, I'll never forget a parent that he gives me crap, he gives me a hard time about it all the time when I had to escort him out of the gym in front of everybody. And so I just feel like then we have a leg to stand on. I told you, you're still doing it, you're gone.
And, and we told you what was gonna happen.
Yeah, and then I'll stand at the door of every one of these events and be like, hi, I'm Carter, you know me, you don't get to come in, sorry. And so then I can actually feel like I'm managing it and I'm doing the, what we said we were gonna do. And, and spring sports, I don't disagree with what you're saying Macy, but spring sports, we hold one track meet.
Well, it would be meaningful.
Okay, okay, and I just, that's where I'm trying to, you know, I'm just trying to make sure that I get all the information out of what I was chewing on while I was trying to make a decision. And I try, and part of my job is to try to prevent this from getting here.
Right.
And so that.
Thank you for that.
But you know, but I mean, I didn't do that very well.
No, adults make, these, these were people that made very poor decisions. And, and whether or not they thought it was right, it's hard for me to fathom that, but who would do it if they knew it was wrong? I just have to go back to there, it's like.
I think that, I think who would feel knowing that it's wrong, people do it all the time through speed, knowing that it's wrong, we do it all the time, right? And so, I mean, I think, I think you get comfortable in certain situations that maybe aren't right.
And so that's why I'm saying I wanna fall on the grenade here. I feel like I haven't done enough to where I haven't been adequate, like the example Jocelyn was using, we allowed that behavior to happen in our gyms and in a sense condoned it.
Yeah.
And so that's where I'm at fault. If you, if you, you know, like I needed to go sit next to Stephanie Shoemaker and just say, sorry, you don't get to say that, sorry, you don't get to say that. And then she can accuse me of harassment, but I'm trying to protect the kids, I'm trying to protect the officials and she wants to accuse me of that crime. But that's what I'm saying is I didn't do enough of that and maybe it's my fault that this behavior escalated.
And I don't think it's entirely up to you because we all sit in the stands as one. And again, it comes back for that, from, to that food for thought. We are role models for everybody sitting in that gym. And if I don't turn around and say something to somebody who's being outrightly a horse sport, shame on me, shame on them, but doggone it, shame on me too because I'm not saying, look, nobody in here appreciates that and it's not okay. And I, it's, so it's not, it's not all your fault, but at this point, we're at a point where we have got to step it up, but we also have to, in my mind, we have to be fair and equitable about how we do that. And that's, to me, that's where a written warning that lists out the consequences. If you go 75 on the freeway, the police officer has the right to pull you over and write you a speaking ticket. I know that. So why choose to be bad and get, and take the chance that I'm gonna get the speaking ticket? But if we don't tell people, if you do this, this is what's going to happen to you.
I just thought what you said in your one, you gave consequences.
Yes, you've got it.
I've got it here somewhere.
We've got so many things.
Well, while I was looking, I see push pull for both sides on this and I can say I like the idea that Carter talked about parents being required in the meeting because it's an opportunity for them to ask. because it's an opportunity for them asking a question about what we can clearly state again every year. But look, this is our expectations, this is what we're the people on the stand. You know, like or not, they're clearly, it's an opportunity to ask and disagree. But at least we stated clearly and it's repeated time and time again. You know, I know they'll say after, I'll be sure after a couple years, I know I have parents saying, well, I've had to listen to this thing for two, three years now. I compare it to why I actually have taken first aid 18 times in my life or something like that, you know? But, you know, we need to hear those things because otherwise, you know, time about it, you forget and you have that recital.
So in the letter that we received guidance from, from OSAA, from Kara Parker on the phone, the first, the first bullet is you violated OSA's rule 3.4.1 spectator conduct and then it lists out how you violated that. Then number two, you violated OSA's sportsmanship statement and then it lists out how they violated the OSA's sportsmanship statement. Then in the third bullet, it's you failed to consider and inform the intent of board policy IDGK and it lists out why, how they violated that policy. Then it says, based on these findings, this is your official warning that if you continue these actions, the following will occur. You will be excluded from OSA's slash Union School District sanctioned contest for one calendar year, beginning at your next violation and ending one calendar year later. And then it lists out that the OSA handbook gives me the right to do that. And then the other bullet talks about the district will be policies to effectuate the OSA's sportsmanship statement. So exactly what James and I have been talking about. Like, how do we do this at the beginning of the year? How do we get parents in? Where do we add, we exclude the right to, or we reserve the right to exclude anyone at any time for any reason. And that's like the taco, you know, sportsmanship's number one and this is what we're gonna do. This is Union School District's sportsmanship statement. It's that, you know, James or I can come up to you at any time and say, Macy, you have to leave now. And then that's what we do. And then I, you know, and then that armors me or gives me the ammo to go into the bleachers and go sit next to somebody and say, I'm sorry, if you continue to say that, you have to leave. And then I, and then...
No, you said that, you, me.
Yeah. So...
Well, these people...
Yes, yes.
These people, for sure. And if Mindy hasn't already gotten her letter and she's being obnoxious in the stands, then she gets the letter and the next time it's... Go find somewhere else to be tonight.
And if we observe it, we can come tell you and say...
Yep, yep.
And you got legal advice on how this was written and put together?
Yes.
Okay.
And Kara's been wonderful.
Yeah, I will say Kara's been wonderful. I feel like we have daily conversations. Maybe with my cup of tea every morning.
Well, I just wanna shout in here and say congratulations to all of you for changing your job as an executive official seriously. And it's my great pleasure to see our democracy in action and I applaud all of you for making these hard decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you, we need some kudos.
Okay. About this, Devin, Nick, you're the one who asked the cops in your talk.
So I feel like I'd like to consequence more than, than what the letter says, but I kind of agree with Jocelyn and Carter that it's like, you've got your steps and you've got follow-up and they haven't all been checked out. It's like you're skipping to the end, you're giving them a more severe consequence. And so, I feel like, as much as I felt like it, like this letter, I mean, clearly paints it out what it means to be done. And so, I kind of agree that maybe just write the decision with addition to them having the rights of apology.
I'm not bored with you, just like Nick. I agree that you have to do the apology letters in addition to the...
We have no teeth. We can ask.
Okay.
But there is no... Kara, question for you.
Yes, I'm here.
If we were to request the three adults in question to write apologies to the coach, is it simply a request? Is there any teeth to that?
Yeah, I don't see you having any legal recourse to be able to enforce that. You know, there's no rights or privileges that parents have that you can kind of take away, you know, without wandering into advice here.
Sorry.
Of some kind of consequence. But I think the enforcement mechanism here is a piece that will be really, really tough because it's a requirement.
Okay.
So, so can we, what can we do, like other than requesting it? Do you, are there options?
We request it prior to the second, but you can still destroy grounds in.
Did you hear that, Kara?
I did. Again, there's no, there really is no legal mechanism. I wish you could force parents to do these things. You know, I think you would have potential loss on your hands if you decided to trespass them or if you in any way interfere with their ability to, you know, attend district events that weren't related to athletics. I think if you put yourself, if you put your board members in the position of having to enforce maybe a trespass situation, you could run into false prison situations. I, I don't see any good coming of trying to have some kind of teeth for this. I think voluntary is the best you can get.
Okay. Appreciate your answer to that. I know it's, I know you're, I know it's tough because you're here to answer just some questions and not give us advice.
But James, you met, you and I met with the number one, the name that comes up the most is Sharie, right? And she was adamant in the meeting that you and I had with her that she did no wrong, that she didn't do anything wrong, that they were having a family fun day at the gym. And so, so I, I think...
There's a lot of lying going on in this thing.
And, and so what I'm saying is, you know, that like, that's the other side of this, right? The other side of this is that these adults don't feel like they did wrong. And, and so, I, I don't know if you're gonna get a voluntary
Probably not.
Uh, apology. And so I'm just trying to talk through all the scenarios of all the things and I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth. I just know that from our conversation that James and I had with her and her husband, they did no wrong. They had a family fun day, we played a little basketball.
I know they did expect an apology from Kobe to work around as well.
What?
And I wasn't at that meeting.
They, they expect an apology from Kobe?
Yes. Yeah, because when, when initially Kobe made a statement and there was no chance for them to, of course, he got up and left. And so, so they're, they're expecting an apology for, for that.
And I think from the letter I read tonight, you could see how, you know, Kobe's the last, the, his, the ultimate act of betrayal is how he ends his letter to me. So you have, I mean, you're two total polar opposites in this scenario. And, and so, I think, I agree with what Kara is saying is there's not a lot of teeth. You know, I can go say, hey, I would like you to apologize, but I can't really, you know, do anything with that. So I think that, personally, I think that makes us look bad. And I don't think we're gonna get an apology from them. And I'm not gonna force Kobe to apologize in, in that situation if she feels that's necessary. That's, she can feel the way she wants and we can feel the way we want. And what I did in this situation, I felt like the best thing I could do was use this mechanism with the warning and then we just become like the worst administrator possible.
Well, yes.
At a basketball game, you know, it just, you go and you sit next to somebody and go, and...
Well, then how can you not respect yourselves? Anita and Stephanie.
I never got to talk to Anita. Stephanie felt like they were just, you know, doing a family fun day. They weren't, you were at that meeting. They felt like they weren't doing anything wrong. They were just coaching up their kids, they were just doing post moves, you know? And, and, I mean, I had two daughters that played basketball for this community and I can tell you I was in that gym all the time with those kids, all the time. Sometimes they had buddies there, sometimes it was one-on-one. And, and so, and those are, I have some great fond memories of that. So I would get a fault apparent for doing those kinds of things. But did I organize a practice outside the coach's purview? No.
Well, I mean, I can say the way which we held the initial meeting, a lot of them, they should have given a chance to get their side of the story. But their story has changed too as well from that meeting to current, as far as their level of learning. So additionally, there was some recognition in that first meeting, when I was with them as to... Because my initial statement was, you should have talked to Kobe first. And if he says, you have to go ahead, you've got to go ahead. And if anybody has a complaint, then it's goes to Kobe, does he even go ahead? He says, no, he's the coach and he'll have a shooting on that outside of that. They acknowledged that they agreed with him. But then, like I said, we went there, it was, it was different to what we thought we were. And I know that which stopped them. It was, it's very, it's very intense between the initial meeting and the second meeting. So, I feel like, like the stand, as far as they should, she should have given a chance to get her side, defend herself. They should have took those rules and that wasn't important to them at that meeting, but there's still a little bit of change.
I feel like we take back the footballs later thing. I mean, it seems like, I mean, you're gonna ask somebody who basically know they're wrong or an apology that they're, they're obviously right. I mean, is there a way to threaten them after you do something?
Whereas I feel the apology from James and I to the parents and to the students on the other side, I think there's meaning to that. And I think that shows that they, parents have been heard and the kids have, we understand that this was a horrible situation and we're gonna do everything we can to prevent it from happening in the future. There's meaning to that.
Correct.
But I agree with what you just said, Nick.
Well, and we can, you guys are in the business of educating kids and teaching kids and this would be a teaching moment for them. Lord knows you do a real crappy job of teaching parents. And, and you can't.
Yeah.
And probably we won't be able to in this situation. But to think that they thought they did nothing wrong is, I just can't, it's a harpy. They're making that up. They knew they did wrong. They know when they yell at the referee, they're not supposed to do that. They don't need a warning. It's wrong, you know it's wrong, but they continue to do it. But we have no hammer, it's a problem. Maybe, just maybe. Well, it's gonna be a fact that next basketball season, those people aren't gonna keep their mouth shut.
Then it's on me to work.
But we have, we have a hammer. This is given the written warning.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, I don't...
I like you, I think they should be in this one mark.
I'm getting real tired of parents running roughshod over our coaching staff.
I'm getting tired of people doing the wrong thing and getting away with it. I think that's hard to make for me, is knowing that there's been so much wrong that happened with literally, in my, I feel like we've done... It's hard, it's hard for me. And I feel like... And I...
The six people. So the, the, both Blackburns, both Shoemakers, Anita Evans and Kevin Browning. And even though Kevin Browning was the most of the lawyers to provide the warning to me.
I feel like we need to, I could name six parents off the top of my head that need that warning letter, like today. I'm not joking, you know?
That of what?
Need the warning letter today.
Oh, oh. Well, I drank a bunch of coffee.
Well, but I think, I think what we're talking about, Macy, is that that's what we're gonna change moving into that.
Right, but I don't wanna get into track season, like right now what's going on and one of those parents do something screwy and not be able to discipline because we haven't provided a written warning letter. So the parents who have been kicked out or received a letter from any gym this year should have one of those. And if you get a warning letter from another school district, you get one of those letters from the department's district.
Okay.
You know, if you, if anything is brought that is remotely disrespectful and, and unfortunately, you get the letter. And if we have, if we have parents in this last school year that fall into that, send them a letter.
Okay.
If this is due to your behavior during volleyball season, this is due to your behavior during... I mean, and I guess if we don't, then that's fine. But now we're moving into another sports season. I know, I know one particular parent has kicked out two gyms this year. Once in volleyball season and once in basketball season. And we've done nothing about it. And then, and then lost his temper and ended the year volleyball list. So, you know, those are the things that I'm saying, how do we do this moving forward when we have shit shows on our hands currently?
But that's it, moving forward. You've gotta start somewhere. How can you go back and say, oh, we've decided that what you did six months ago was not okay?
We, we, we don't have to, but we could set the precedence with this, saying, these past incidences where you've had us come up and talk to you counts in this realm of two, three, four, five seasons where we've had that conversation with you. Now we're having a conversation with you again, you're kicked out.
So we're my...
But we have taught Satterfield the verbal warning before we've removed him for 12 calendar, 12 months?
He laid hands on an opponent's coach. That's, that was a totally different scenario. I, I mean, I hated, I, I don't know if I can say that. I mean, that scenario was different. But what my thought is, is that we have the parent meeting, we record the parent meeting and I specifically say, this is your warning. As a parent, consider this your warning. You can be removed from any gym, any OSAA Union School District sanctioned event at any time for any reason. This is your warning. And then I have to go be the gym police is what has to happen. And so that sets the tone for the beginning of the year. And if he screwed, if he messes up in volleyball season and I hear him making some comment, then that's on me that I didn't take...
I think that a parent contract needs to state, but if you have horse sportsmanship at any point, any of these things can happen, lead up to, like, we don't have to provide a written word, we don't have to provide a verbal warning. Like, if you break this contract, you can see removed for 12 months.
I agree with that.
And I agree, that, that's put it down, you cannot do it, but if you choose to do it, this is what's going to happen. Period. And putting those things proactively in place, starting next fall, make a ton of sense. And we've already got these six already out that take effect of spring sports from, from whenever he served those forward. You're a jerk at a track meet? We'll see you next... You're a jerk at a track meet, we'll see you next year at track season. You're a jerk at the baseball game, we'll see you next year at the baseball games. Those aren't even served.
I did not, I did not get down to the softball game at the beginning of the game. I had a different meeting. But I was down there from about the third inning on and I sat in the middle of all those parents. And there were some questionable calls and not people. And so I, I think softball's different, um, but, um, you know, we just have to be an absolute physical presence in the crowd all the time. And I, you know, and the other thing I used to do when my girls played is I would take that big box of suckers. And I'd go to every game and as soon as somebody said something or stood up, I'd throw them a sucker. And, and so, I mean, and I did that for years. I mean, all the way through, you know, Ellie and Audrey.
So what about no volunteering and no refing for us?
Uh, the volunteering piece, I think we can do, and Cara, correct me where I'm wrong, but we cannot prevent them from income.
Yeah, if there's income online, then they potentially have a property right. And then that means that the government can't deprive them of their property rights without due process. Um, and so as public employers, you're paying a coach, you can't just say, we're done with you because of your conduct as a parent. Um, it'd have to be a job-related thing and they can't receive, you know, notice of the reasons why they're being dismissed and opportunity to address that. Um, it's, it's not impossible, but it just, just means that there's a potential lawsuit there.
Can we choose not to contract with their employer?
If their contract has expired and it's just naturally come to an end, you can absolutely choose to non-renew or non-rehire or whatever terminology you wanna, um, use for their coaching position. And volunteers don't have any property rights to their volunteer game. So you can certainly just decline to, um, use their volunteer services for, for any reason or other reason.
Do you rest for us? Oh. Okay. I don't foresee that being a good thing next year.
I would agree 100%.
I, I did.
They should. Sharie, Blackbird rests for us. And I said, I don't foresee that being a good thing for next year.
She gets paid for that.
She's part of the association, which we contract services with the association. And we don't get to pick and choose who our officials are. The association assigns the officials games, not us.
You can't, Blackball.
I mean, ask for certain officials to not be sent to your school, but I mean, you can absolutely, like, they are not allowed. Just because based off of, like, in this case, right now, our current situation numbers, that they may be unable to get.
Oh.
So you can say, you can say you don't want this person, but then I may have to provide you with an official for that game. So.
We would highly prefer not to ever.
I'd like to definitely put that to their permission. For the preference.
Okay, let's go. All right, has everybody had a chance? Does everybody feel heard that they've had a chance to say what they think? We're not, we're gonna agree to disagree on this. We know that. And that's okay, because we are a board of five. That's why we are a board of five. That's why we are a board of varied experience. Very, it just, that's why we're a diverse board and that's a good thing. It's okay to disagree. It, it, it's life. Would someone like to make a motion to uphold Carter's letter, official warning letter and, uh, provisions to make changes before next fall? A yes vote would uphold the warning letter, a no vote says, no, I do not agree with that. I would want to do something else.
May I make a motion that we uphold Carter's decision for the warning letter? And we change this for next year?
Do we have a second?
One second.
All right. Your vote, Deb?
Yes.
Macy?
No.
Nick?
Yes.
Mark?
No.
I'm a yes. The vote passes three to two. Moving forward with this and coming up spring and summer, charged with figuring out including as many stakeholders as possible, coaches, parents, administrators, AD, and whoever else. Get this team handbook done with consequences, with as many examples as we can provide to be as clear as possible what we are talking about when we say sportsmanship is a focus for Union School District. We expect to set the example. If you do not, you will not be invited to our things. It's just gonna, it, it has to be, in my mind, it has to be that clear.
I, I think I like a line in there. I'm gonna talk about it once we get to going through a little bit of things. I, I think that it would be important, given how this year has gone, that we get to see that before it actually gets sent out to people so that we're all on the same page, so that we have an understanding of what that says as parents approach us. What, so-and-so did this, so-and-so did that, and blah, blah. I think there just needs to be a blanket line in there that, that it is, we, it is, any of these are possible discipline up to indefinite removal, yeah, forever removal from school sanctioned events or whatever we want. But I think we need to basically have this blanket statement in there that we can do whatever we want. Essentially, like we can finger you from any sporting event at any time or any agreement at the discretion of the district.
And we need a board member on your committee, James and Carter, whoever's gonna end up doing this thing. I guess one other, one other thing that runs through my mind and I've been thinking about this, and that is as we approach next fall, James and Carter can't do it all. But we can be eyes and ears at varsity events. And I think personally, I've tried to make a, a better attempt to get my mind in, into these games. I think maybe next fall, something to think about. Can we make sure that we're there with eyes and ears as well, helping try to get this under control? We've got a problem and, and we need to fix it, but I, I feel like I need to be part of that fix as well. And I would hope you guys would feel the same way.
Most of all the games and everything, do I approach them and say, knock it off? Or do I just come find you and say, do you get it?
What do, what do you think, Cara? Did you hear that question?
Can you repeat it?
I had a question. Are, we as a board member, can we go and speak to the parent and say, knock it off? Or you're gonna get consequences? Or do we need to go find either Carter or the AD to speak to them?
I would say you could do that to your own comfort level. Again, if you were getting in a position where the parent is in your face and you were like physically containing them, then you, you could run into some, to some sort of accusation that you're doing a false president or something to that degree. So I would, I would perceive the caution, um, you know, I can, I can advise you in a non-public capacity about minor limitations on that, but, um, you know, whatever your personal level of comfort is, we guide you with the knowledge that someone could complain that you falsely impersonate them.
I think having Carter, that you do it just kinda settles.
But if, but if we see it happening.
We need to say something.
We need to say something about it.
And then it affects them, the thing, and then they can always still appeal up to the board.
I would, I would think it'd be of the balance to, and correct me, Cara, if I'm wrong, but I think it'd be of the balance if you guys came and told us and that, hey, I witnessed them do this, and we come and say, okay, you're gone, as opposed to some other community member comes and says, then I just feel we would need to go over and witness it and otherwise it gets into, he said, she said, that person was like me and, and he's seen. So, but I mean, I'm just throwing that out there.
I like that. That make, that makes sense. Because we are intimately involved in this. We've had legal counsel over this. We're done with it. We need to make a correction.
Yeah, and I would like to see the handbook also given to the junior high athletes, with the parents having the same expectation. And I'd like to see it starting horsemaning down all the way that way. I think if we start horsemaning junior high, we're gonna have less issues in high school. And by the time they get there, parents are gonna know the deal.
Yep, I agree.
And then I think also some education to our, our coaches would be good. I know sort of myself as a coach, uh, coaching in junior high girl basketball, I was a campus particular student, we have had a couple parents being not super great. And sometimes it's hard as a coach to coach and then also handle parents and, you know, students and players and trying to, like, what do you do in those situations when you have a parent who's on the baseline being outrageous at a, at a different school, you know, or when a different school's AD comes up to you as a coach and says, hey, get your parent under control. Things like that, like, they don't teach you that in coaching class. So I think, I mean, education for our coach on what to do if we're in those situations and how would you like us to approach things in the future?
So then you go to their AD and you say, if you wanna remove them, you remove them?
Well, and that's what happened in this particular situation. We said, go for it. But, I mean, I think that those are good things for coaches to know that we may or may not know. Like, I wasn't at that game and, but, is that my understanding is that is what Brittany said, it's like, hey, I'm sorry, you know, whatever, do whatever you have to do. But, um, you know, I think that's a good thing for parent, for, for coaches to hear too. Like, hey, there's a parent that's being outrageous at a game, like, their AD can help you out or, you know, can speak your language to say, yeah, go for it, you know, things like that.
So one of the things is we gotta compile all of these stories from last year and we present that at each one of our fall, winter, spring sports parent meetings.
Those are your examples.
Yeah, we had a parent ejected, you know, we had, we had seven parents ejected last year. This is a problem.
Yeah.
You, you know, and that's, that's our.
And then some parents received warning letters from other gyms or other school districts. Or James received phone calls from other ADs from other districts about parents. This many phone calls, you know, if we get those two together, then take them, so the parent can understand.
Yeah, like, it's over.
That's right. I mean, if you're getting one of those, then you get one of ours.
Yes, like, then we're done. And that used to be in their, in their package they signed at the beginning of the year too, is if they get a written warning letter from another school district because of their behavior, that is a direct reduction on the new school district. And you will receive a written warning from us.
Warning board?
Or that counts as your written warning for our district as well.
Yeah.
And, you know, the next one, you're done. Or, you know, we can talk about those, whether a government wanna approach those things, but.
But make sure that they don't include, that you don't just get a pass from your.
Yeah, there, there's somewhere else and, and we get a letter from that school district, that company's handed over to you from us as well. I like the late, and, and letting them another district, not the same figure, is the same as getting a written warning from us. So that, that's your, that's your first strike. If you get a letter, that's the same thing as getting a written warning from us. Your next one, you're out. Our gym or someone else's gym.
And that goes in our.
In the hand.
Stuff.
Yeah. Those are the things that the work group, right?
Yeah.
Is there other conversation down these lines of proactive things we can do at this point? Or if there isn't, then I would say, let's wrap this up. Let's get back on track for April's board meeting and hope that it's normal. As, as normal as it can be at least.
I have a money.
Evaluations are over.
Hey, you, you should be grateful that we all submitted our evaluations before I'll be peeling.
Uh, it's gonna heck of a problem.
Is, is there anything else that anybody wants to say before we adjourn? I'm giving, I'm giving sufficient wait time. I hear none? This meeting is adjourned. I appreciate all of your thoughts, your time. And Cara, thank you very much for, uh, I'm sure we've entertained you, but probably not in a way we hoped for on that whatever night this is. I could be lost.
You, you guys did great. Congratulations on.